Good evening, Chair. Calls order legislative session day twenty-three dash zero zero one. Please join us in standing for the pledge followed by opening prayer by Councilman Jan Giordano.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Father, we thank you graciously for the new year 2023. We ask you, Lord, to bless Harford County as we begin this blessed new year with a renewed hope in you, Lord. We thank you so much for all that you have done and ask to continue to look over the citizens of Harford County. Amen.
Amen. Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations we have none this evening. Number five, consideration petitions, applications, appointments, and nominations. Council, you have a list of council member appointments to serve on various boards and commissions. Mr. Pembman.
Mr. President, I move to approve the council member appointments to serve on the following boards and commissions. Harford County Community Mediation Commission, Councilman Deion Guthrie. Harford County Cultural Arts Advisory Board, Councilwoman Jessica Bull Sodles. Economic Development Advisory Board, Councilman Tony G. N. Giordano. Harford County Chamber Liaison, Council President Pat Vincenti. Local Emergency Planning Commission, Council President Pat Vincenti. Local Management Board, Councilman Jim Riley. Sheriff's Office Liaison, Councilman Tony G. N. Giordano. And Tobacco Task Force, Councilman Jacob Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Pembman. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. It has been moved and seconded to approve of council appointments. Any discussion, council members? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pembman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved. Executive appointments, deputy directors, council, if there are no objections, we will move the following appointments together. May I have a motion, please?
Council President, I move to approve the appointments of Nicole Barnwell, Deputy Director of Human Resources; William Bateen, Deputy Director, Department of Public Works, Water and Sewer Division; Karen Myers, Deputy Director of Procurement; Rick Purnas, Deputy Director of Treasury; and Amber Schrooge, Deputy Director of Community Services.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. It has been moved and seconded to approve the following appointments. Is there any discussion? Mr. Riley?
Mr. President, I see Nicole's in the audience, and Nicole, I see your HR director is here, and you guys as support as a team, and I saw that in the transition. It was very seamless. You guys did an excellent job, a lot of moving parts, and so I think it was a good choice as a holdover from the last administration, so congrats to you. And also, another good choice was Amber Schrooge from Community Service. I've worked with Amber before, and I look forward to working with you in the future. And congrats to all the deputy directors. You'll get a yes vote from me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Anyone else? Mr. Giordano.
So, good evening, everybody. So, I just want to reiterate what Councilman Riley said, and I know all of us up here pretty much did a lot of interviews with a lot of different deputy directors. Myself, I had the opportunity to deal with some of the deputies and directors before. Nicole Barnwell, to deal with you, and Tiffany in your office, you know, fantastic, always very helpful. Mr. Bateen, same thing with you. I mean, your knowledge speaks for itself. We're lucky to have you. Thank you very much. Amber, I think it goes beyond saying that you're a rock star, so wherever you're at, we certainly appreciate that. And Mr. Purnas, I mean, you've been here quite a long time, and you go about your duty, and you do it well, and we certainly appreciate that, and I don't think Karen's here, is she?
She's not here. She couldn't make it to see.
Well, and also, working with Karen before, I think we're lucky to have her back and add some stability. So, I just congratulate all of you, and thank you very much for your service to Harford County.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. Anyone else? Mr. Bennett.
I just want to thank Council President Vincenti and Councilman Pembman for including my legislative aide in on their interviews, so I could have detailed notes on everybody. That was a huge help, and it meant a lot to me. And specifically, I mean, everybody was very impressive that we're approving tonight. And specifically, it was interesting, looking over my notes from Mr. Bateen, you were talking about PFAS chemicals, which are permanent chemicals that are found in our water system caused, you know, by military bases, farmland, also known as, you know, ninety percent of Harford County. But it was great to see you talking about that, because then it popped into my newsfeed today as a conversation Council President and I had. So, I'm definitely going to be reaching out to you in the next few weeks to ask more about that with your expertise on that topic, because it was just a coincidence that it was talked about in the interview, and it came up in our conversations again. So, I look forward to working with you so that we can all have clean water and a well-run sewer system here in Harford County.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anyone else? If I may, I want to echo sentiments of our council members here. I've had the pleasure of working with all of you for the last eight years. You've done an outstanding job, and I look forward to working with you in the future. I also look forward to bringing more appointments forward next week, so that we can wrap this up as soon as possible. We had a nice discussion with county executive this morning. They sent over four more names for us today, so we'll try to wrap that up as quickly as possible. And with no other comment, Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pembman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Thank you. There being seven votes in the affirmative and zero in the negative, the appointments are hereby approved, and I do appreciate you all being here this evening. I see Mr. Bowling's in the audience as well. We'd be looking forward to addressing him next week, so thank you all very much. Appreciate your service to the county. Agenda item number six, present special presentations we have none. Seven approval of minutes, legislative day twenty-two dash zero twenty-nine, December twentieth, 2022. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes stand approved. Agenda number eight, introduction and consideration of resolutions we have none. Nine introduction of bills we have none. Ten introduction and consideration of amendments. Mr. Giordano, would you please read in Amendment One to Bill twenty-two dash zero twenty-five into the record for introduction, please?
Amendment number one, on page eleven, in line eight, strike Court of Appeals and substitute Supreme Court.
Thank you. And again, due to the nature of this amendment, it will be considered this evening in preparation for next week's public hearing, so may I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Mr. Riley, thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. It has been moved and seconded to approve of council appointment, I mean, not appointment, I'm sorry, amendment. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Mr. Guthrie.
Aye.
Mr. Pembman.
Aye.
Mr. Giordano.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
There being seven votes in the affirmative, zero in the negative, Amendment One to Bill twenty-two dash zero twenty-five is here approved. Agenda items eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, that's call for final reading of bills, enrollment of bills, unfinished business, and new business. We have no business this evening. If I may, I'd like to go to comments from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do, Mr. President, but I do need to check the book.
Okay.
After business item.
All right, again, just be mindful of your time. Please call you first speaker.
Emma Peller, followed by Ron Stucinski.
Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Emma Peller, 1447 Redfield Road, Bel Air. Hello, council, and thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here to discuss the preservation of our environment here in Harford County. The county council and county leadership have shown over and over again in the past a disregard for the environment and a favor of developers over citizens. However, the fight is not over, not for Perryman and not for Abingdon Woods. Harford County still has a chance to get this right. Tomorrow, there will be a hearing on the forest conservation plan for the Abingdon Woods development. It will be held at the Harford County Circuit Court at nine a.m. I urge all of those who have been following this development, or any Harford County citizen who considers themselves environmentalists, to attend this hearing. Show Harford County that we are watching and that we care about what happens to our land, our drinking water, and our roads. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Ron Stucinski, 319 Marina Avenue, Aberdeen. Happy New Year to council. I just want to give a couple updates or clear up some things. Tony G. said last week, he started with Perryman people, I've been back to Perryman. I've been back there with truck drivers who have told me about the roads, not from you people, because I wanted experts. So, I've gone down there a couple times, found out from experts that road is horrible. I don't know if you mean Perryman Road, if you mean our residential roads. So, I just, I wanted you to clear it up for me when you get a chance. And the residential roads that the trucks do use illegally. It's kind of a slap in the face to refer to the residents who drive these roads daily, not monthly or weekly like a truck driver, as you people. And if a random truck driver is an expert, then I guess it makes all of us that go there every day rocket scientists as far as roadways. But when referring to Tim, you did say that I know there's empty land there. I'd be glad to discuss where you build your home. I don't get calls from people all the time that complain about where they build, and I can help answer that, because in Bel Air, they're not really building mega freight warehouses around homes, and that's kind of what we're fighting for. Then you said, I tell people, watch where you build. If it's a farm or land behind it, somebody's going to build there. Well, meanwhile, they were going to build a small farm brewery, I believe, north Harford area. A moratorium was put out to halt that, took less than a week to get it done. I believe every council member at the time actually went and had a meeting at that land with the residents in less than a week's time about why that couldn't happen. And then, I was thinking about it, and I can't think of any vacant or farmland north of Route forty anywhere that they're planning to build any warehouses or illegal freight terminals. And for the record, I've been in Harford County my life, all my life. I looked for eight months where we wanted to build a waterfront property in Maryland. We decided on Perryman, and one of the reasons why we did decide on Perryman is because we did read and understand the Harford County code and the zoning laws, and we know what's being proposed in the community now is illegal. We were even told by the builder, Bob Ward Homes, that the land was never going to be built on because of the wellheads. That's what, actually, a lot of us that built there was told. So, really, we don't need help on where we need to build our homes, we need help on stopping illegal building around our homes, is what we're looking for. The county's allowed developers, lobbyists, and local attorneys to influence our officials for way too long. The codes have been ignored. Case in point is Woodley Road where we live now is zoned LI, and everything that's being used back there now is being used illegally, including the two hundred containers that sit empty at Wayfair and the Container Store. This is a hundred percent illegal by our zoning code. I want to thank you, all of you that have reached out to us and have met with or spoken to us, and the citizens of 3P and Perryman. We'll continue to provide you with all and any info that you request. Those that have not reached out, the clock is ticking for us, and we cannot, we can speculate why, but we want to give everyone a fair chance to be concerned and help us in our fight. I guess last, Mr. Casely, I just want you to know that we are waiting for you to help us in any way you can. We campaigned for you, we worked the polls for you, we got a statement from you, and we just don't have time to keep ignoring what's going on. We need your help, and we're looking forward to working with you and the county to make this a better place. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Paul Filacci, followed by Ellen Shinelli.
Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Paul Filacci, 320 Marina Avenue in Perryville, Perryman, or Aberdeen, Maryland. Happy New Year. Welcome to all the new county council members. Wanted to talk a little bit about the enterprise zones tonight. So, two of the main features of enterprise zones is to ensure retention and spur expansion of resident businesses, in my mind, that means like a local business or, and then promote development and occupancy of vacant, underutilized land or buildings. And so, I just, if you guys, you guys are new, we've got new council members, when they come up, in the last eight years, they've expanded the enterprise zones outside the normal ten-year period that they do it. And so, if, when it, when it does come up to vote in the next couple of years, they usually two or three years ahead of the, the developers, two or three years ahead of where they know they're going to, they want to develop, so they expand the enterprise zone to give themselves tax discounts. Before you vote on it, if that's like in another area, if you could please go to that area and look at the area and look at like the woods that are Abingdon Woods when they expanded the enterprise zone there, and think to yourself, is that really, are we retending, are we doing a retention or spur expansion of resident businesses when it's woods? Or promotion in the development and occupancy of vacant, underutilized land and buildings? Same thing in Perryman on the farmland, is they continue to add enterprise zones so that it makes it attractive for business to come in and buy this land. And so, I would even challenge, and I plan on talking to District F Councilman about this, maybe we can start reducing the enterprise zones that are not appropriate, because they're not doing the things that our own code says that they're supposed to be doing. So, just, I just wanted to bring that up, think about it, when this inevitably comes up in a couple of years, please go to the area, and just because it's not in your area, look at this and see, is this really the enterprise zone that we want to be expanding? And have an open mind, if there are some areas that maybe we should reduce the enterprise zones. The two big enterprise zones are in the Edgewood, Aberdeen area, and the people that live in the area, we're kind of tired. It's not benefiting the people in the area, it's benefiting the developers and the businesses that come in. And I'm just going to close on the resident businesses, just because in Perryman, some of the headquarters of these companies that are there now don't sound very residential to me. Amazon, it's one of the big, you know, everybody knows Amazon, headquarters are in Seattle, Washington. XPO Logistics is one of the owners of the building there, their headquarters are in Greenwich, Connecticut. CBRE, one of the big, you know, building owners there, their headquarters are in Dallas, Texas. That's Caldwell Banker Real Estate. And then Sephora, it's great to have the business in there, but their headquarters are in Paris, France, so they're not really resident businesses. So, we just kind of want to follow, when we look at that enterprise zone, what, are we really following what we set out to do in the county? Or maybe we need to update it. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Shinelli. I live at seventeen oh four Park Beach Drive in Perryman. So, we spent the whole last year talking about things we don't want. We don't want more traffic. We don't want more noise. We don't want contaminated drinking water. We don't want pollution of the Bush River and the Chesapeake Bay. We don't want destruction of wildlife habitat. We don't want the loss of historically relevant property. We don't want to add any more warehouses or distribution centers to the Perryman Peninsula. We do not need to supplement the income of corporations, especially those from outside of Harford County. We have already established that Harford County has no need for additional distribution centers. What we do want is help. Help with orchestrating a development that works for both the landowner and the residents of Harford County. Your job is to do what is best for the county and all of its citizens. New year, new council, new start. As our representatives, it is your job to ensure the rights of your constituents are being upheld. It is your job to create and maintain legislation that keeps us safe and comfortable. We need guidance to create a needed sanctuary and still allow for compensation for the landowner of the proposed Perryman development. Who's willing to help us achieve these goals? Whether it be grants or tax benefits, there must be a way to obtain an outcome to benefit all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The last speaker this evening is Stacy Stone.
Good evening, ma'am. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Stacy Stone, twenty-one oh six Park Beach Drive, Aberdeen, Maryland, that's in Perryman. Welcome new members, this is the first time I've been here since you were sworn in. I'd like to welcome you. Hope you enjoyed some time off around the holidays. I certainly did spend some time with family, and it really enjoyed that, and really enjoyed spending time in my, my house in Perryman. It's a wonderful place to live. But I was not off of my part-time job, which is the engineer for Protect Perryman Peninsula. Now, what I mean by that is I'm a civil engineer who volunteers my time with this organization. You may have seen, or will be receiving, a copy of a letter that I sent to State Highway Administration. In that letter, I outlined four main areas of concern. The biggest area of concern we have is keeping these tractor trailers out of the village of Perryman and off of the residential roadways. The developer had drafted a plan that included a bridge over top of Perryman Road. The developer subsequently removed that bridge. That would have kept not only the tractor trailers, but all the employees that were working at this freight distribution center off of the residential roads, and it would have really helped a lot with the traffic. So, that's first and foremost. State Highway has a concern on how the developer is going to keep the traffic off the roadway, so I wanted to let them know that there was a plan that was removed from the package. The next biggest area of concern is the intersection where Spessusia Road hits Perryman Road and then Chelsea Road. So, Chelsea, Perryman, there's this really strange configuration there right now, and the developer is saying that a signal is not required, not warranted there, but the state highway wants to take a look at a roundabout. So, I had proposed a roundabout that is going to work better than what the developer had provided the state highway, so I'm hoping State Highway will evaluate that, and once you understand, you know, that as well. The third item has to do with the number of parking spaces. So, on the developer's plans, there are fifteen hundred more parking spaces than what the Harford County code requires. What that means to me is fifteen hundred more people can go work there than what the developer is saying are working there, and the county nor state highway have an opportunity to look at the traffic implications of that. So, I wanted to bring that up and make sure that State Highway takes that in consideration. So, and the last item really is the developer ignores State Highway's request to make sure that the pavement is adequate. So, I'm reiterating that that's important. These roads weren't built for tractor trailers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Let's move to agenda item number sixteen, business from council members. Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to highlight a few things. First, some good work that's been done in our community in these past few weeks. Chandler Blake of Havdy Grace and her nonprofit organization Positivity Pals coordinated with one hundred thirteen sponsors to help get a hundred sixty-two families Christmas presents this holiday season, fulfilling the wish lists for children, and it all wrapped up with a Christmas party for the families at the Star Center with Santa and hot chocolate there, which is really awesome. Last Thursday, Abingdon Fire Company received a donation of lunch from Mission Barbecue with dessert from the Cares Community. I think that's really great, and it's just a way of saying thank you to our volunteer firefighters who do so much. And I just reached out to all of our volunteer firefighters with a letter introducing myself, well, all of our departments, not each individual firefighter, that would be a lot of ink. So, looking forward to touching base and getting to know those people so I can support them the best I can. Tomorrow, January fourth, from nine a.m. to two p.m., the Armed Services Blood Program is hosting a blood drive at APG North at the Recreation Center, building three-three-two-six. So, if you're someone who is able to donate blood, you can make an appointment online at militaredoner.com. Starting January seventh, right around the corner from my house, the Havdy Grace Winter Mini Market will be taking place every first and third Saturday from nine to eleven at seven hundred Congress Avenue, so right where the high school used to be. I wanted to talk about safety, because that was a big point of conversation at our last meeting. I'm working closely with 3P to look at road safety and how we can address it. You know, my legislative aide Heather talked with Lee Maddox on the phone, and we just reached out to Stacy via email to see about what, what next steps we should be taking to work towards addressing your concerns. I know just today, there was an accident out in front of CNS, a lot of concern in the community about that accident, because right there is also one of the biggest concerns for safety as trucks pile up on the side of the road. I know even the truck drivers who work there are unhappy with the amount of time they have to spend idling on the road versus, you know, getting in their deliveries and getting out. So, you know, that hits home today, and I just hope that the people who were in that accident are safe and taken care of, and that we can work towards ending such events like that in the future. And then, I just want to make a note of, of the passing of Robert Galls, who's known for Galls Bakery this past weekend. He was also a member of the Susquehanna Hose Company, and he served as the president for four years, captain for sixteen years, and was on the board of directors for decades. You know, the Galls family is a cornerstone of our community, their business has been there for a long, long time. I think they just celebrated ninety years last year. So, just, you know, thinking of their family during this hard time, and, and, you know, thankful that their legacy will, will continue to live on to everybody like me who eats doughnuts. So, that's all for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sodles.
Thank you, Council President. Happy New Year, everyone. I wanted to start off by letting 3P know that I've heard, I've heard everything you're saying, I've listened to you, I've talked to some of you, I've gotten your emails. This week, I intend to reach out to Harford County Sheriff's Office Community Policing Unit for assistance for the issues that the tractor trailers are creating. I know in the past, this has been done, and signboards have been installed, deputies have passed out flyers to businesses, and even visited with them. So, I will be working on that this upcoming week, and I will report back to all of you on that, because safety is a huge concern of mine. A couple of events coming up in my district, the Aberdeen Library is hosting Friends of HCPL Book Sale Collection Thursday, January fifth, from twelve to six in their meeting room. You can donate books, CDs, DVDs for the upcoming book sale, and all the proceeds support library programs and services. Harford TV has some great events on the calendar on their website. This week, they're inviting kids ages eight and up on an owl prowl at Eden Mill Nature Center. That will be January sixth and seventh. You can check out their website for more information at harfordtv.org. And lastly, I wanted to let everyone know that Councilman Pembman and I have been working on some legislation that will establish term limits for the county council. I look forward to working with the rest of my peers on the council to move this bill forward, and I'll continue to keep the county updated on our progress. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Riley?
No comments, Mr. President.
No comments?
Yep.
You do represent District D, right?
Every day.
All right. Mr. Pembman. Let's get in the car and go home. South.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have one future initiative I would like to discuss. It is my intention to advocate for one of my core beliefs and fulfill campaign promised by introducing legislation that will pave the way for establishing term limits on the Harford County Council. More specifically, the legislation that will soon be introduced will take the decision out of the council's hands and allow the voters of Harford County to decide if they support term limits on the ballot during the 2024 presidential election. It is my belief that serving on the council is a unique civic duty and should not be a career or lifetime assignment, which is evident from the council position being designated as a part-time responsibility. Council members should be a representative for the people, by the people, and not to, not so entrenched in self-preservation or political rhetoric that they lose sight of the real issues of their communities and county. It is evident- It is evident that the ideal was a constitutional consideration, which is why the President of the United States, the Governor of Maryland, and the County Executive for Hartford County all have term limits. For that purpose, for the purpose of reducing power of incumbency and providing new, fresh ideas from the best and the brightest minds of our community. The bipartisan support for term limits across our nation and state is undeniable. According to a national poll, 80.1% of Americans support term limits. More locally, Baltimore City just passed a charter amendment during this past gubernatorial election with 71.33% of the voting population supporting term limits. Now that we have almost an entirely new and fresh, dedicated council, with each member having less than two full terms in their current roles, it is time to introduce a legislation to voters and allow the community to decide if they support term limits. I want to thank Councilwoman Jessica Bull Sodows, who has not only pledged her support, but will be partnering as a sponsor to help pass this legislation. In addition, I've also had positive conversations with County Council President Pat Vincenti concerning the term limit legislation. During the coming days, I hope to speak with more in depth with all my colleagues to advocate support for this future legislative proposal. Thank you all and please stay tuned for more information and the official submission of the term limit legislation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pemben. Mr. Guthrie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hearing this conversation going on about term limits, I thought I would provide some accurate analysis of what's happened since Hartford County has been existent with this county council. How many people have been on the council on the time that, in the history of our county? This is, before I got elected here in 2002, I spent 15 years in Annapolis, working in Annapolis, dealing with both sides of the aisle, learning legislation and learning how to get through different items in Annapolis. Here, and what we did down there, you're working down there a lot, you get this idea down there, you get feel-good legislation. The reason you get feel-good legislation is because they have, they literally have 4,000 to 5,000 bills and to go through in 90 days, that's literally impossible, you know, without plenty of help. They're going to go through all those bills that they have to go through down there. So consequently, when you, when you look at what we have here, a lot of the, excuse me, back up a second. A lot of the delegates down in Annapolis and senators, they introduce feel-good legislation. They know very well that it isn't going to pass. And I don't think that this is going to pass this council, but we'll see what, what comes in the future. But I just want to give you a, for information, more than anything else. You look up there on the wall, okay, you see all those pictures of all those past councilmen. There's only one missing that ours, it'll be up there. I did a flow sheet on all the council members that ever been elected. And I want to give you some startling statistics, official statistics. Because you already have, you basically already have a two-year limitation, I mean, excuse me, a two-term limitation. And let me give you the reason I say that. There are, there are 51 members served on the county council in the history of, count in this council right here. There's 51 legislators that have served on this council in the history of Hartford County, 51. 39 of the 51 have served two terms or less. That makes that 76.5% of all the people who have served on this council have served two years, two terms or less. So it appears that in most cases, they're using this as a, a projection into another office. I've never done that because I wasn't interested in going to Annapolis or to Washington DC or anywhere else. That means that you have, you have 12, you have 12 members that sat on this council in our history who have served more than two terms. In the history of Hartford County. So what you're doing, you want to talk about putting in legislation, okay, to deal with seven or 10 people. You know, it's insane. You already have it, you know. I was in office for 12 years from, and see, this didn't affect me because, you know, I'm four-year terms, I ain't playing, I'm retired at the end of this, so I'm kind of not involved in this. But 39 people is 76.5% of the 51. Only 23.5% have served more than two terms. So I really can't see what this does except it's feel-good legislation, like they're doing in Annapolis a lot because people can't get bills passed, so they put in legislation to, to make them feel good. We've only had one person that served on this council that ever served 20 years, and that's Rob Wagner who just left. Now you talk about terms, look at this council, five seats changed. And it's one term, you've had five seat changes. And they can change every time, every time's an election, can change. It's the people who have, I don't want to take it out of the people's hands. I think the people have a right to make a decision who they want sitting up here. I don't think it should be our right to say, well, you can only do it two terms. I know they did it in the city and it, it got vetoed, but, you know, in the city, it should be one term, you know. As bad as, as screwed up as that city is, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to compare Hartford County to Baltimore City at all. But anyway, that, that's the way I see it, that's the stats. 51 total members in all of them years, 39 of them served two terms or less. That's 76.5%, it's already in place. So you're, you're, you're going to go through all this and if they don't, if they can't get it passed on the council, and, and we talked about this, so it's nothing that, we've agreed on most, on most legislation and stuff. We haven't agreed, we haven't agreed on this. But I did a long, a, a, a total spreadsheet on all the members that served on this council. And this is the spreadsheet. This is all the members that served on the council, all the years and how many years each term. That's, that's for, that's for your information. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of discussions on this in the future. But it's something I can't support because it's, it's, it's already in place. And if you wanted to sit there and put in legislation, that's going to affect about seven to 10 people out of 240,000 people. I mean, that's what, that's, that's how ludicrous this is. There's 240,000 people in the county and you're going to pass legislation that's going to affect about seven or 10 people. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. I just want to echo Mr. Bennett's comments about the Galls family. He's correct, in 2000, or excuse me, 2020, in December, we had the great pleasure and honor to recognize the Galls family for their 90th year in business. And anybody that knows them knows how dedicated they are to the community in Havity Grace, to support businesses, to support the nonprofits, to support the local fire department. Jacob talked about Bobby's service, Sticky Bun's service. That's what we all refer to Bobby Goll as, the Sticky Bun. And 65 years active in Susquehanna Hose Company, he's correct. He served as a captain, a president, member of the Board of Directors, just an outstanding individual. He is an icon and a pillar in the community. He is going to be missed not only by his family and friends, but he's going to be missed by the entire community. So my deepest and most sincere condolences to he and his family and friends. And hope you all keep them in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, we're going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting. Thank you.